Can I have a rule call supervisors, please? Supervisor Gens. Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to citizens comments. Anybody wishing to speak, please step up the podium. You'll have five minutes. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Mathewson. I reside at thirty-one twenty-one Seventy-second Avenue in Summers. Here today to speak about an issue that I was upset to read in the newspaper this morning and yesterday, is that a member of this body was arrested for a felony. This individual received due process, and that's how that should play out. And so it's only fair that we reserve judgment until after that process is completed. What I have a big problem with is that apparently it just took one phone call to the sheriff, and this gentleman was released immediately. From what I understand and work with in my profession, that's unprecedented. When you're arrested for a felony on the weekend, you've got to sit in jail until Monday, when you see a court commissioner or a judge. The fact that the justice system in Kenosha County treats anybody else differently than the next person based on that person's position in the community is an injustice. And I implore all of you to look into this and find out, one, is it legal? I'm understanding that it's not legal. And two, are we doing this uniformly across the board? Or are we just picking and choosing who we release on felony charges without having to post any bond? And bond is meant to ensure that you appear in court. So I'm outraged that our sheriff played politics and helped out a buddy when he should have followed the law and followed precedent and followed policy of the sheriff's department and treated everybody the same. And I hope that doesn't happen again in the future. And I hope you ladies and gentlemen of the board look into that and figure out what went wrong and what we can do to stop this from happening again. I understand Bill Beth is the commander of the jail, and so I would imagine that decision would have had to pass through him at some point, too. So I think the sheriff and Bill Beth should be accountable to this body and to the taxpayers. And we need to find out, if that was me, we all know I would have been sitting there, maybe today still, maybe I'd be there in an extra week. But we need to treat everybody the same, and that's why the ladies of justice have blindfolds, because we're all supposed to be treated the same, no matter who we are, what we look like, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Citizen comments? Anybody wishing to speak? Step up to the podium. About five minutes. Citizen comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
Linda Pfeiffer, thirteen forty-five Ninety-seventh Avenue, Kenosha. Good evening, everybody. My name is Linda Pfeiffer, and I am here again before you tonight, representing the hard-working Kenosha County employees and members of ASME Local nine ninety. When voting on the budget tonight, I hope you will keep in mind the Kenosha County employees who work selfishly every day, serving our community, who have received nothing more than a quarter pay increase since our last contract ended in 2012. I'm sure you can agree that twenty-five cents doesn't go too far over a seven-year period, especially when inflation has increased by eleven point six-six percent during the same time span. And then on top of it, Kenosha County employees are now required to contribute to their pension, health insurance, and dental insurance. In addition, lost their flex account money of four hundred dollars for a single plan and eight hundred for a family. I urge you to stop balancing the budget off the backs of the dedicated Kenosha County employees who deserve a pay increase on day one of 2020. I also urge you to not support the change in our health insurance to the proposed ninety-ten plan. This, again, will place more burden on Kenosha County employees who have already lost so much. The reasoning behind this introduced ninety-ten plan is to have employees become consumers by doing price comparisons for services on the Humana website, but this information is not available. When contacting Humana directly, we were told this information is no longer available on their website or to their representatives. I reached out to HR last week requesting some direction as to where employees could find such information, but as of today, no response has been received. I urge you to not support this costly plan until the information is available. I understand the difficult task this board faces tonight, trying to control budget spending by Kenosha County employees simply cannot afford to endure any additional cost and deserve a pay increase on day one of 2020. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other citizens comments? Any citizens comments? Please step up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Schmidt, fifty-eight thirty-three hundred and eighty-first Avenue in Waitland. I'm a Vietnam era veteran, United States Navy veteran, sixty-four to sixty-eight. After service, I moved to Twin Lakes area and joined the American Legion there. At the time, we built and owned our Legion Park, where there is a memorial to Merrill and Gloria Johns, John Barry, one of the founders of the American Navy, and Father Matthew Zurfus, who died while a POW during World War II. I've spent time at Pets. I can't recall any veterans' recognition there. After the Vietnam War, there was the Veterans Memorial at the municipal building, the Navy Memorial at the harbor, and a POW MI Way at Library Park in the city of Kenosha. And there is recognition of our veterans in Pleasant Prairie. There's the war memorial, World War One memorial on Daniel's property next to the church in Brighton. If not for a popular watering hole, not many people would know where Brighton is. And the beautiful new veterans memorial from our wars, from all of our wars, that the late Larry Erdman, his family and friends dedicated a few years ago. I am very familiar with the park property as farmland, gravel pit, and Kern Park. I can't think of a better place for citizens of Kenosha County to recognize our veterans and sacrifices made by them and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Phil Allen. I reside at ninety twenty-one two hundred and sixty-third Avenue in Salem. I'm a VFW Department of Wisconsin State Chaplain and Hospital Director. I also serve as Chief of Staff for VFW District One that covers several counties here in the area. I'm a member of VFW Post Seventy-three Old Pleasant Prairie and a member of Post Twenty-one American Legion Kenosha. I served in the U.S. Navy in Vietnam, Chu-Li, Vietnam, nineteen sixty-seven, sixty-eight, to earn my right to become a veteran of foreign wars. I'm here in support of the park, the Veterans Park out in on KD, that will honor all of our veterans in this community. It's very important that we show them that we care about them. When we came back from Vietnam, we weren't cared about too much. We were spit upon, we were swore at, we were neglected. So we're trying to change that now with us, with the Vietnam veterans and the ones coming from Desert Storm, Afghanistan, and Iraq. We want to remember them and show them that they're welcome back. So we think this park out there would be a good start in doing that. I represent a lot of veterans in this area that are all in support of this, along with a lot of citizens that think it's a great idea. So my recommendation is you pass this line item in the budget to support this park out there in the western part of the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens comments? Hello? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good afternoon. My name's Daryl Green. I live at sixty-seven thirty-one hundred and eleventh Avenue here in Kenosha. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the board. As many of you know, I served as a Veteran Service Officer for many years before Ali Nelson, who's doing a great job right now. And one thing that I learned as a Veteran Service Officer, one of the things that I really enjoyed being a Veteran Service Officer here in Kenosha is the support that we got from the board and all its members and from the county exec, Jim Cruiser. Now, going as a Veteran Service Officer, I went all over the state, met with all the other Veteran Services Officers in seventy-two counties here in Wisconsin. And I can tell you that it was a joy for me to go to those meetings and listen to those guys talk about all the issues and problems that they had in their particular county, trying to serve the veterans. And I can tell you unequivocally that I didn't have that problem here in Kenosha. There was a lot of reasons for it, but there were two main reasons. One of them was we had a leader that had the foresight to see that we needed to protect our veterans and support them as much as we could. And through him and people in this room right now, you in particular, we were able to do that the entire time I was there. I've never spoken before the board before, because I never had to. You were always there and supported us for everything we needed, and I appreciate that. The second thing that I really enjoyed about being Veteran Service Officer was these veterans that are sitting over here asking for your support again. Now, these veterans do a lot of work here in this county, and they don't come to the county and ask for money. If you look at all the organizations in this county, very few of them ever come to the county and ask for anything. You've got the Heroes Cafe. It's not the county supporting that. Just the other day, we had a stand-down, a great stand-down. Some of you didn't get an opportunity to get there. It's gotten bigger and better every year under the leadership of Ali Nelson. And then again, there's no need to come to the county and ask for money, because the veterans are still doing the same thing they've always done. They're serving. They serve the country, and they're still serving Kenosha County right now. If there's an emergency that comes up right now, one of the first groups that'll be out there trying to help and do anything they can for this county are the people sitting in this room right here, the veterans. Now, this particular part that's been proposed in your budget would be a wonderful opportunity for us to show our support and our reverence that we have, reverence we have for our veterans. It'd be a great and wonderful place to be able to take your family and sit down and talk about all the things and the freedoms that we have in this country, due to the fact that our veterans put their lives on the line to try to make this country the wonderful place it is. And this would be a great place to go out and meditate with your family, great opportunity to do things out there and show your support of the veterans. I'm asking you to show support again, once again, to the veterans here in Kenosha County, and I'm sure you will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other citizen comments? Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
Joel Clark, forty-eight sixty-two one hundred and fifth place Pleasant Prairie. I just want to thank the county board for following the levy cap process, that this is the sixteenth year that this budget has gone under a levy cap. I want to thank the county board also for sticking to their guns and coming in below their levy cap. Whatever that levy cap is, I think that's where you guys need to come in, and you guys have done that. So I want to thank the supervisors for doing that. That happened one other time in county board history, and the county board very clearly came back to the administration and said, this was our number, this is where we're going to come in. They worked together, and they found a way to get it done. So thank you all for being sensitive to that. Relative to the bonding and capital projects, I noted that projects were pushed off. It just seems like we're pushing off the inevitable, and things have to be done. And when that happens, our costs are only going to go up. And as we tout the impact on this year's budget, it's going to be very minimal, because the bonding for the first year is not going to have an impact. I thank the supervisors that want to hold the line and continue to fight to hold the line. I would also encourage you in your committees to take a look at our roads when we implemented the levy cap. The one thing that I wanted to make sure that happened, that we maintained our infrastructure, that's very important. Just going back to the levy, coming in at two and a half percent with new growth in the county, I'll bet my county portion of my tax bill will go down again. And that's, again, you guys are fighting hard to do that. I want to thank you. Relative to the memorial park, I think it's appropriate. We can't thank our veterans enough. When we started the park, when I was on the county board, it was called KD Park. We were looking for a name. It's taken a long time to find the appropriate name, but that's appropriate. So with that, thank you, and thank you for the budget process that you guys are going through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other citizens comments? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dr. Rory Burns. My address is one zero three zero four Sixty-third Street in Kenosha, Wisconsin. I've lived here in the city of Kenosha since two thousand and one. I've served in the Army since nineteen eighty-one, actually, from nineteen eighty-one to two thousand and six, when I retired. And since being here, the people of Kenosha have shown me great appreciation for my service, and I cannot think of any negative experiences with that regard. Also, I cannot imagine the amount of requests that may come before this body concerning veterans. I know we veterans can be athorned in the side when we attach ourselves to an issue or concern that we believe in. However, many of us go on to live lives, rather uneventful lives, outside of the spotlight, never seeking self-importance. Maybe that selflessness that we so willingly rendered when we accepted the call of service was the actual makeup of our existence in this life. We saw duty and service before selfishness and personal gain. I think that's the same sentiment for any public servant. To me, veterans are simply good citizens that felt the need to help protect our country for a period of time. We have soldiers, sailors, Marines, airmen, coastguardsmen, that depart this life every day. Some, you know, I've seen some that we bury that have no one, you know, no one. However, for the most part, you'll find that they're just those close family members, you know, children, very, very close friends. You know, our country offers us a medal as payment for our service. That includes posthumously. And some may receive a small pension, you know, for serving over twenty years, as well as those that may depart early as a result of a disability, sometimes wounded in combat or wounded some other place. There are families of veterans that all they have are medals and letters of recognition. Some of our servicemen and women die young, given some of the things that we're exposed to, as well as some of us never fully recover. Within our ranks, suicide is at an all-time high. Actually, a few blocks from here, you have the Veterans Memorial Fountain, you have the Lone Soldier Memorial, and they're all at the Navy Memorial. And it's funny, that Navy Memorial was dedicated in this month, November nineteen seventy-six. Now, I don't know if that was a Navy thing because of the presence of the Navy here. I don't know. You know how it is, out of sight, out of mind, maybe they were in visit, right here in sight, and they got the name. But a Veterans Memorial would serve as a monument for those who contributed greatly to the welfare of our grateful nation during both involuntary and voluntary times. Also, it would offer a place where our community can be educated about what military service is meant for our freedom. I ask that you support the Kenosha County Veterans Memorial Park, and I hope you do not delay the decision to move forward. As said, support for our veterans is not a partisan way. It is the American way, and I thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens comments? Any other citizens wishing to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dick Stater. I live at fifteen eleven eighty-fourth Street. I've lived here for fifty years now. I'm retired United States Navy, served from nineteen fifty-three to nineteen seventy-three. And I'm very excited and happy to know or to learn about the proposed Kenosha County Veterans Memorial Park, and I can only urge you all to give us a yes vote on it this evening. I can see the beautiful park being a great place for veterans and their families who need an opportunity to experience a quiet and serene environment. Thank you for your support on this.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens wishing to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rob Roberts. My address is fifteen oh five eighty-fourth Street, right next to that guy, here in Kenosha. This memorial park, I don't think Kenosha's come up with a better idea in a long time. I think it's a great idea, and I think it should be pushed forward immediately. Right now, there's a forgotten war, and I'm standing here to tell you that we have been forgotten. I am a Desert Storm veteran. I am not a Gulf War veteran. I am not a post-nine-eleven veteran. We talked about a memorial that was recently placed in Kansasville. There is no Desert Storm memorial there. There's a lot of memorials out there that do not have Desert Shield, Desert Storm. People say it's the same thing. Then World War II and Korea were the same thing. Then Korea and Vietnam were the same thing. They were ten years apart. Ladies and gentlemen, this is an opportunity to make this correct, to make my brothers and sisters recognized in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Erickson. I reside at four twenty fifty-seventh Street, number three eleven, in Kenosha, Wisconsin. I'm here to speak on behalf of naming the Kenosha County Veterans Memorial Park, and I would, there's strong support from veterans and friends of veterans, and I would ask if there is any opposition, what is the reason for the opposition? There should be, if there is opposition, there should be a reason for it. If not, it could be just being contrary, but the support is overwhelming for the naming of this park. I would request that the county board approve the naming of the Kenosha County Veterans Memorial Park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens comments? Citizens comments? Seeing none, citizens comments are closed.
Presentation of the Kenosha County twenty twenty budget by Supervisor Rose.
Supervisor Rose, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen of the board and members of the general public. When the administration presented the budget to the board, it contained a two-point-nine percent levy increase. The county board had previously presented a resolution and adopted it, which called for a two-point-five percent levy increase. The Finance Committee, after considerable deliberation, discussion, debate, has come forward and presented this evening a budget which includes a two-point-four percent levy increase. So we've not only met the resolution, but we've surpassed it. How have we done this and still meet what we believe are the needs of this county? The Finance and Administration Committee held hearings over a period of four days, listening to different arguments in support of the propositions included in the budget. We met the goal of two-point-five percent and exceeded that in the following ways. We revised the planning and development budget by decreasing expenditures by some twenty thousand dollars, a direct levy reduction. A revision to the Board of Adjustment budget by three thousand dollar decrease, a direct levy reduction. A revision to the highway budget by increasing revenues by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as we anticipate new work from the state, which we will be paid, and this is a direct levy reduction by increasing revenues. Small decrease in the Aging and Disabilities budget of eight hundred dollars. A revision to the countywide wage market adjustment, which has a net impact by some a hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollar direct levy reduction. In other words, the employees of the county still will receive on their anniversary date in twenty twenty, a four percent increase of their midpoint range, again, on their anniversary date. And in twenty twenty-one, will receive an additional one percent on their anniversary date. So this is a total over a period of two years of five percent. And based upon all of those things, the budget will come in with a levy decrease or levy increase of two-point-five percent. It also has a human resources budget decrease of some twenty-five thousand dollars in expenditures, a direct levy reduction. There's a bonding decrease of some seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in bonding, which doesn't have a direct levy impact this year, but over a period of time will have a direct levy impact, as there will be decreased bonding of some seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And this is taken from the facilities, golf parks, and sheriff's divisions. I think it's well to note that some of the other important points is in the last twelve years, the general purpose levy has averaged two-point-two percent for the twelve-year period. That's a very low general purpose levy increase. Taxes paid on a home add of a hundred thousand dollars, four-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and ninety-six cents, or two dollars and nineteen cent increase. It is a mere point four-eight-seven percent increase. Equalized value in this county has increased this past year over a billion dollars. The six-year increase for equalized value is over thirty-two and a quarter percent. This averages almost five percent equalized value and a stunning recovery from the Great Depression, recession. And equalized value increase is now at a countywide high for all time. I've left on your desk a summary of the budget, the twenty-twenty levy and mil rate presentation. It includes some of the detail here that I won't spend much time on this evening, but you can study it overnight. We'll be talking about it tomorrow. In terms of number of new employees, it has a little over three new employees. You'll also note that the total numbers of full-time county employees decreasing, almost forty-eight employees. Why is that so? We do not, we're not including those people who are part-time, or rather seasonal-type employees. They may work part-time or full-time part of the year, but they don't work the whole year at, let's say, the golf course or the park. So we've removed them from the total number of employees from Kenosha County. Budget also, once again, includes some two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the KABA High Impact Fund. This is part of the bonding. It is paid off rather handsomely with some very large developments, with substantial companies paying high wages coming to Kenosha County, Harrow Bow being one, Uline another, and there are many others in the offering. And we're offering two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars additional for the High Impact Fund to take advantage of opportunities that are not yet. opportunities that are not yet announced. Our capital improvements have some $22.1 million of additional bonding, and that will be presented tomorrow night as well. There are other items in the budget which are set forth here, which you can take a look at. The budget resolution is something that we will take up, which is a policy statement tomorrow evening, dealing with what we see for policy in the coming year. And the highlights of that are set forth in your resolution, in this summary this evening. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that is the conclusion of our budget summary this year. If you want your book to be, new pages there, just leave it on your desk. Every page would need to be changed. The staff will do that for you, or on your desk, you'll see a flash drive if you want to look at it that way. We can also give you a one-page summary to include in your budget if you don't want all of the pages changed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Rose. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn? First, a motion by Supervisor Nudo, a second by Supervisor Rodriguez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.